All right. Good evening and welcome everyone to our August 8th, 2023 Borough Council meeting. Tonight we are conducting our monthly Borough Council meeting both in person and virtually. We're glad you've decided to join us tonight for this meeting. During the public participation and public hearing portions of tonight's agenda, community members joining us via Zoom may raise their hands virtually. And our staff will unmute your microphone and announce your name, then you'll be able to make your comments to council. We will start with members of the public court here in council chambers in person with us tonight, and those joining us remotely will follow after that. We have two public comment periods tonight, one towards the beginning and one towards the end. We do ask that public participation be limited to once per a participation session and that you keep it under three minutes. With that, thank you again for joining us. We will now begin with Pledge of Allegiance and Moment of Silence.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And Mr. Kraft with rural call tonight.
Mr. Berkeley.
President.
Mr. Carmenito.
President.
Ms. Dugan.
Here.
Mr. Kirkman.
Here.
Mr. Moore.
Here.
Ms. Webb. Mr. Weiss.
Present.
Mr. Evil.
Here.
Mr. Mayor.
Here.
Manager here is assistants virtual, chief is here, solicitors assistants here, and we got a quorum.
Thank you kindly. And Ms. Webb is excused tonight. She had a prior commitment that excluded her from being able to attend. With that, this is one of the rare occasions we'll bump right into a presentation. I believe Chief Marshall and our mayor Ursula will be taking over from here.
Thank you so much, Mr. President. Good evening, everyone. We are very honored. Certainly, I just want to take a moment to thank you all for being here with us, those who are here with us in person and those who are joining us virtually. We're very fortunate in the room for those who aren't unable to see it, but around the entire perimeter of the room are a number of Phoenixville's police officers. And so I just want to personally, while we have an opportunity, certainly if we could all please recognize our incredible police department we have here within the borough of Phoenixville. And thank you so much. It's not often that we have the opportunity, especially in a group, to recognize all of our incredible officers. And we are certainly here tonight for a very important celebration, and that is the swearing in of a brand new police officer. So, Brian, if you and your mother would please join me in the center.
It's my pleasure to introduce the newest member of the Phoenixville Police Department. Brian White accepted our offer of employment after doing exceptionally well throughout our rigorous hiring process that began this past June. Brian White demonstrated that he is among the best of the best from the applicant pool, and we are fortunate that he is joining our organization. Officer White was born and raised in Prospect Park, Pennsylvania. He graduated from Interboro High School, and he's a veteran of the United States Army. He served our country for four and a half years at Joint Base Lewis McCord in Washington State. Officer White was honorably discharged from the United States Army and was accepted into the Delaware County Police Academy. He recently graduated from the Police Academy in June. Brian is joined here this evening by both sets of his parents, his siblings, and other family and friends. His mother will be holding the Bible this evening.
Aye.
Aye.
Brian White.
Brian White.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
Obey.
Obey.
And defend.
And defend.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
Of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
The Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
The laws of Pennsylvania.
The laws of Pennsylvania.
And the borough of Phoenixville.
And the borough of Phoenixville.
I will.
I will.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
Discharge the duties of.
Discharge the duties of.
Office as a police officer.
As a police officer.
Within the borough of Phoenixville.
Within the borough of Phoenixville.
Police Department.
Police Department.
Phoenixville.
Phoenixville.
Pennsylvania.
Pennsylvania.
I will uphold.
I will uphold.
Obey.
Obey.
And enforce.
And enforce.
The law.
The law.
Without consideration of.
Without consideration of.
A person's race.
A person's race.
Color.
Color.
Sex.
Sex.
Religious creed.
Religious creed.
Sexual orientation.
Sexual orientation.
Age.
Age.
National origin.
National origin.
Ancestry.
Ancestry.
Handicap.
Handicap.
Or disability.
Or disability.
Congratulations, Officer Brian White.
Absolutely. As is customary, after one of these events, we will now allow the officers in the room to exit for a photograph with our newest officer here. So our attendees would like to take a moment to clear out. Unless you want to stay, that's fine, too. All right. And with that, we will now open up our first round of public participation. We'll start with those members joining us here in person in council chambers. After we move through those wishing they come in the chambers here, we'll then move to the folks joining us on the Zoom platform. Again, if you're joining us on Zoom, please raise your hand digitally. Once we've gone through the crowd in the room here, we will make our way through everybody on Zoom. When you approach the podium, if you can just state your name, whether you're a resident and sign in on the sheet for the purpose of the minutes.
My name. My name is Susan Meadows. I own Generations Toy Store at 113 Main Street, and I'm here to discuss some things that I feel like need to be clarified in the ordinance that's proposed for plastic bags. One of the things in particular is the the item under two, a commercial establishment may make available for sale to a consumer a recyclable paper bag for a mandatory uniform charge of 10 cents per recyclable paper bag. I pay, I brought a couple of my bags, several sizes. I have quite a few. As you can see, and they all cost well over 10 cents a bag. I'm not sure where the 10 cents came from, if I'm supposed to be recouping money or just penalizing my customer by imposing a 10% charge on them for my bags. These are my gift bags. I use them. I put tissue and ribbon and I use them for the bag. So in the second part of that, I mean, that adds it also adds, I feel like we're nickel and diming our customers. Small stores in general have enough trouble competing with Amazon. As soon as we start adding 10 cents here and another 10 cents there, we start to become less and less competitive, and it's hard enough in today's world to fight Amazon. So that that is part of my concern is the mandatory fee as well as down a little bit further, it spells out what needs to be on the bottom of the bag to make it conform with what's being requested for the ordinance. And all of these bags came from the same company. This bag has nothing. Several of them have. For instance, this one says it's recyclable and it's made in the USA by Novalex Duro. Some again have nothing. And this one does have 100% recycled, 90% PCW Wooder-based inks, India, please reuse and recycle. So from one company, I've got at least three or four different things on the bottoms of the bags. And I can't, I can't fathom having to tell a company that they have to have certain requirements on the bottoms of their bags. I spoke with my vendor earlier today, and in order to get spelled out on the bag exactly what the borough seems to be requesting, I would have to order a minimum of 3,000 bags, and that's if they're made overseas. If I have to have them made domestically, I would have to have a minimum of 20,000 bags produced, and I have at least six different sizes. So I would have quite a few bags stacked up in my basement. So I would like respectfully, if we could perhaps table this ordinance until there's a chance for the business owners in the community to to meet with the committee and have some dialogue so that we could hash out some of the details that face us in the real world and face you in the governance world. Thank you.
I already signed in. Becky McCarron, resident of Phoenixville, 43 years. I was speaking with my friend, Gail Warner, who owns Bridge Street Chocolates. She is unable to be here tonight. And I read through what your proposal was. I really feel this is government overreach on your part. That everyone should voluntarily do what they feel is best for their business, but to mandate this and also to mandate the fines. You're giving an undue burden on our small businesses that are already struggling after COVID and trying to recoup from that. And I also think that there are other ways that you could improve recycling without putting that burden onto the small businesses. For instance, and I know this is probably out of your hands, but I would love to see glass bottles come back. That was true recycling. Because right now, your biggest source of plastics are your big bottles, your soda bottles, your milk bottles. It's not the straws. It's not the what you call one-use plastic bags, which honestly, they're never one-use in my house. They're always reused for other things before they're thrown away. And you can only recycle plastic one to two times. They're not forever recyclable. And the cost of the recycling, honestly, if you look into it, not really saving a whole lot, if anything. It's more expensive. Glass bottles are the way to go. And yes, I agree that we should all be doing something for our environment, but I don't think this is it. I don't think punishing our small businesses downtown is the way to do it. So I stand with the small businesses and I would object to this. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Alan Fegley. I'm the Superintendent of Schools of the Phoenix area school district. I'm here with Ms. Susan Turner, President of the Board of Education. We are here tonight to update the Borough Council and the public on the latest activity related to the Case Center property with the goal of resolving this matter in a way that benefits the taxpayers of the borough and the entire school district. First, some brief history. As a number of you were not yet on council, when in December of 2021, the borough passed an ordinance which directly impacted the Case Center property. This ordinance change occurred while we remained in negotiations for a possible sale of the parcel to the borough. This ordinance change resulted in the loss of several million dollars to the taxpayers of the borough and the district. Funds needed to help pay for the new elementary school. Over the past 10 months, we have worked to bring this issue to the attention of the members of council and amicably resolve it for the benefit of the taxpayers. We appreciate the time the members of council and the borough staff have taken to meet with us. We now believe, however, that the borough, the district, and the proposed developer are close to achieving a win-win-win solution. And we hope we can count on you for your timely action, timely action by the Borough Council to amend the ordinance and continue to move this process forward in a way that benefits all taxpayers. As you should be aware, the developer is purchasing the neighboring industrial property and has put forth that they intend to achieve the following. Remediation of the industrial property, additional green space for the community, housing, and an education center for the borough. They achieve this by combining the Case Center property with the industrial property. Yes, that is correct. You heard me correctly. By combining the two properties, the proposal will include the remediation of an industrial site, new housing, green open space, and an education center donated to the borough. You can see some of that in this plan in front of us that we tried to show earlier for the last few weeks. This new plan involving the combined properties addresses all of the prior borough's stated concerns. Thus, the win-win-win, green space, remediating a property, education center, housing, and funding for a new school. We recognize that agreements like this take time, but we believe that an disagreement is within striking distance right now. In order to make this work, we respectfully request that council address this ordinance change at your next meeting. Council members, the district and taxpayers, thank you for your consideration and hope you agree that it is in the best interest of all parties to move forward to a resolution in a very timely manner. It is important that the taxpayers know and see that we are working together to achieve the best outcome for them and the students of the district, particularly as we prepare to break ground for new elementary building. President Turner?
Thank you, Dr. Fegley. Council members, please let your administration know it is time to move this project forward. It is in everyone's best interest that we settle this, that we stop spending legal fees. As Dr. Fegley stated, this new plan addresses the concerns previously raised by the borough. It's a win for all sides. It remediates the industrial site and less more green space. Plus, and I don't know if Dr. Fegley mentioned this, there is a public park on the side of this, too. So at no cost to the borough, this plan offers a two-acre educational center and a new municipal park at no cost to the borough. Council members, please direct your administration to meet with the developer this week. Let's work together to get the necessary zoning approval done by September 2023. It is time for action, not further obstruction. Thank you.
If you would like to see this plan, we have it here, but we will be taking it this evening. We cannot leave it with you, unfortunately. That will be something that will be shared with the staff.
Hello, my name is Woodley Humphreys. I live in Fillmore Village on the north side of Phoenixville. I've been working on the MDM Nature Preserve project for the last two years. And I see that it's on the agenda tonight, so I just wanted to introduce myself and also state that I'm grateful to the Moskowitzes for offering this land for dedication to the borough as a nature preserve. And I'm hopeful that the borough will accept it with the open space deed restriction. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Lucy Graham, and I'm here on behalf of RiRiRi Plastics, one of the groups in Phoenixville that's trying to advocate on behalf of improving our environmental impact. I wanted to voice, well, first of all, I want to thank you for creating this ordinance, drafting it, and moving the ball forward in terms of improving the way that Phoenixville treats our environment in general and improving our environmental impact. I wanted to voice one concern about the use of biodegradable bags. I'm questioning it as a sustainable solution because it's not clear that biodegradable bags as a compliant bag actually do degrade. Some of them can take as long as three or four years. And we're also concerned that a lot of consumers wouldn't even know to put them in a place where they could biodegrade and actually would just put them in a landfill where they wouldn't biodegrade or the biodegrade, that process would be slowed. So just wanting to reexamine that as a as a possible solution. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Sally Doyle. I live at 205 Gay Street. I'm also part of RiRiRi Plastics, which is a joint effort between the Phoenixville Area Transition and the Phoenixville Green Team. We are so excited about the ordinance. We've read it, digested it, really looked through it. We, of course, as environmentalists, we're never going to say it's perfect, but we are very excited that you're moving forward with this and especially for the, I know it feels hard on some of the stores downtown, but we have been seeing changes already in the past few months, just people moving in that owners and managers moving in that direction. But we're also especially excited to see that it would happen in grocery stores. We think the major, you know, problem with the plastics is coming from grocery stores. So that's very, very helpful for us. I agree with Lucy's comment about the biodegradables. I'd hope that you'll be able to look into the bags and be a little more specific in the ordinance about what you consider biodegradable and how that functions. If that's part, we didn't quite understand if that was that 10% fee or not, which, you know, is also another problem. So anyway, very supportive. Thank you.
Rodney Platt here in Phoenixville Third Avenue and with the Green Team and the Phoenixville Area Transition. Similarly, I with Sally and Lucy before, I am I believe that the takeout bags should not be, there should be no exception for biodegradable. They're thicker than some of the plastic that actually would work, such as the product bags for vegetables, et cetera. You know, you put your carrots and stuff in the supermarket. Those are thin enough and they will biodegrade in backyard composting within a year or so. That's fine. So I would allow that an exception for that, and I would recommend. As far as printing, the recyclability of paper takeout products, I find unnecessary because our current recycling in Phoenixville accepts just about everything paper without any print on it at all, including milk cartons that are waxed internally. So why burden them with having their suppliers reprint this on the back, on the bottom of their containers? There's no point. Paper is paper. That's all I have to say now, and I thank you so much for doing this. This is, this is a huge thing. And Phoenixville is going to be leading the way in this area of Chester County. Thank you.
Good evening. David Lutzker, Morgan Street in Phoenixville, President of the Phoenixville Green Team. Speaking on behalf of the Green Team, the RiRi Plastics Group, and Phoenixville Area Transition, we are, as you've heard, very pleased, very happy that this is on the agenda. You have supporters and support from those three groups. There are reasons to table this for the future. And I think in my mind, the first one is the outreach to the community. In our dialogue, I understand that you have plans to do a lot of outreach after it's passed before it actually becomes effective. In my view, that's backwards. I think the outreach to the community should come now before it comes before the council. So if there were time, and I know that there's opportunities for all the business owners to listen, to watch the minutes, to watch the participate in Borough Council meetings and Policy Committee as well. Nonetheless, the outreach that you were planning would be appropriate for prior to bringing it and would also not only make it smoother, but you would need less outreach afterwards. So the requirement to charge 10 cents, I think, should be made optional. Even if that's not quote-unquote best practice for plastics ordinances around the Commonwealth around the country. In this community, I think it's the right thing to do. Another reason to possibly table it for the next opportunity is the biodegradable bags. I don't have a solution for biodegradable bags, which is representative of the fact that it's not so clear what's best for the environment, best for the community, best for health and safety. If a biodegradable bag is a single-use bag and it ends up in landfill, we haven't, it's not biodegrading. Right? So we need to be careful about what we're encouraging, and it won't biodegrade as is known. Once it goes into landfill, it gets encapsulated and nothing degrades. It stays that way forever. So the fact that it's biodegradable, if it's single-use and ends up in the trash, then we haven't gained anything. So two reasons to reconsider, but all in all, you have strong supporters here with the Green Team. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Reverend Charles Copege. I'm with Grimes AME Church here in Phoenixville. I'm the Associate Minister. I am a lifelong resident of Phoenixville, was born in 56 here. And my Uncle Don Copege, I'm sure some of you knew. And my father, Richard Copege, was the first black police officer in Phoenixville back in the 50s. Now, I love Phoenixville. I'm invested in Phoenixville, and I care about what happens in Phoenixville. And I am also not here just as a citizen. I'm here as a member of Diversity in Action and also as a minister and as a black man. Because I've heard some things that you're going to hear about from Diversity in Action, but I can only speak on what I've experienced. And I had an unpleasant experience, what I consider an unpleasant experience, at the recreation center. And I don't know if it was accidental or wrong place, wrong time. But whatever it is, I just wanted to share it with you folks and let you decide, and hopefully we can correct it if there was something wrong and move forward together. I moved back to Phoenixville. I left for 20 years to serve another church and moved back three years ago. And one day, my wife and her sister had the three kids and said, let's go do something. So we said, let's go check out the rec center. It's new. It's beautiful. Let's go see what's going on over there. And we went over on a Friday afternoon last July. We walked in, all the staff was around the desk, and there was nothing going on. No one was there. And we asked if we could use the gym and the facilities, and they said, no, it wasn't available at that time. I don't remember the exact reason. And they said, fine. I said, oh, it's a beautiful building. Can I at least get a tour while I'm here and see what's going on? They said, fine. So while they gave the tour, I gave my name. And I don't know if that had anything to do with it, but when we came out, they had a little meeting on the side and came back and said, oh, you can use the gym. I didn't know what the policy was or why we were told we could not, and then we could. And then we heard of other. And then we heard of other, I let it go and said, "Maybe it was just wrong day, wrong time." And when I got back to Diversity in Action and shared the story, other stories came up. And I can't speak on it, like I said, but other folks will speak on it and will share with you. But I just want Phoenixville to treat everyone fairly, to treat everyone equally, and I care about how Phoenixville is perceived in the public, too. So hopefully, if there's a problem there, we can correct it and move forward together and treat everyone equally. Thank you for your time.
Hello, everyone. My name's Tim Doherty. I'm a resident of Phoenixville in the East Ward, 114 Fifth Avenue. I'm also a member of the Board of Diversity in Action, Phoenixville, and I'm here representing our organization in solidarity with Chuck's testimony there. And so we've prepared a letter. And so, "Dear Borough Council Members and Gathered Administrators, we, the Board of Diversity in Action, Phoenixville, write today to begin a productive partnership with you, our elected leadership, and our Borough Administrators, to ensure our borough's Recreation Center can become more transparent in its policies, more thoroughly accessible to all its residents in its usage, and more accountable for revising practices that may have resulted in exclusion. We've begun by joining the center's most recent board meeting this past month, and we offer our wholehearted engagement to help in any way we can on this issue going forward. We look forward to continuing our relationship with Ms. Melissa Gibbons, her staff, and other key stakeholders of the Recreation Center, and the larger Parks and Recreation Board and Committee to assure that the center is as accessible, transparent, and accountable moving forward. We ask Borough Council's partnership as well to assure that this work is prioritized, especially for the benefit of our communities of color and our lower-income residents here in Phoenixville. Members of our African-American and Latino communities, including Chuck's testimony you just heard, have experienced difficulties in accessing the center's facilities, and such experiences cultivate feelings of exclusion and a lack of belonging. This is deeply troubling. With the departure of Dolores Winston from her staffed role there, this need becomes even more pressing. We ask that the borough prioritize, if possible, hiring another staff member of color for the center, and to review and revise current practices to prioritize cultivating a spirit of hospitality and inclusion for all members of our diverse borough population. So we call on you to help us in any way you can, to ensure transparency for the public, increased accessibility for all residents, and accountability for any practices that may have limited access for residents in the past. In partnership and solidarity, Tim Doherty and the Board of Diversity in Action, Phoenixville. And we have paper copies of this letter to enter into the record and to give to each of you so that you can bring it with you. And if you need to contact any of us, our President Gwen Hagie is available. She is here tonight, and you can also contact me. It's good to see you all. Thanks for your time.
Good evening. President Ewald, everyone here at the Borough Council, David Sannick, Fillmore Street, Phoenixville. I have a couple of questions. One is, and I've not been able to find this on the website, but I struggle with computers, so I'll put that out there. But anyway, the rezoning committee. I think they're meeting now. I've heard some mention of that, but are they meeting? And if they are, when are they meeting? And are those meetings open to the public? So that's one question I have. Second question I have, I think I brought this up before, but anyway, there's an alleyway behind the last few houses on Franklin Avenue, Franklin and Fillmore. Had a light in the back of the alleyway. And for as long as I remember, there was a light there. And then, when Franklin Commons came, they added another light to the south of it, and they were on, and so they had it lit up. Now, none of those lights are on. And I'm wondering if they could be turned back on. I see there's wires for them. They used to be on. I think there's a lot more people living there now. I think it'd be a good idea to have those lights on for that alleyway. So I, those are my two things I bring up tonight. I thank you for your attention and your help. Thank you. Have a good night.
Anyone else wishing to make public participation at this time, either in the room or on Zoom? Seeing no hands raised digitally. There we go.
Go ahead, Mr. DeLuca.
Good evening. I also wanted to comment on the MDM Preserve that you're gonna discuss tonight. Assuming that it's part of plans that I've seen in the past, that combine Tower Street Park and the two parcels controlled by Mr. Moskowitz, and that you're also going to deed-restrict those, I just wanted to offer support for that preserve and think it would be a good asset to the community to have that. And, you know, just with the wildlife that's available in there and the educational aspects of it, and also commend Woodley, who's there in person, and Mr. Moskowitz and his wife for offering those, and hope that you approve that tonight. That's all. Thank you.
At this time, Mr. Ewald, there's no other hands raised.
Thank you. With that, we'll close the first round of public participation, moving on with our agenda. Next up on our items, we have our consent agenda for minutes and other motions that came out of committees unanimously. What is council's pleasure regarding our consent agenda? Any items to comment, remove, or otherwise?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second, motion by Ms. Berkeley, second by Mr. Weiss. Questions on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. With that, we'll move on to communications and council participations. Any comments or communications the council members would like to make? Ms. Dooken, you want to go first?
Yeah, sure. I have a prepared statement. I know I don't normally do that, but this is probably the best place to do it. So I know it's been hot everywhere with record highs across the globe, flooding and raging wildfires that have even darkened our skies. Phoenixville wants to help remedy this global disaster because in this town, we strive to do what is right. I'm in wholehearted support of the Green Movement to protect our environment and have been pushing for solar panels on borough buildings for a decade. The proposed plastic ban is not a realistic measure for our town. Banning plastic bags, straws, and utensils is a state issue. In fact, it's one I'm in favor of. However, we are a small borough you can drive through in less than 15 minutes, and neighboring towns are not generally adopting such laws. Most won't until Pennsylvania legislates that they must. This type of thing can only be impactful collectively, but instead, we're suggesting Peaville bear this burden alone. The price of such a change is not negligible, as has been suggested, and the approved items will cost more. The new requirements will make these businesses pay extra for the necessary tools and containers, which will undoubtedly result in higher prices for the consumer, mostly our residents. In contrast, solar panels are not only good for the environment, but also fiscally sustainable. That's a win-win situation. Electric charging station for the town and visitors encourage people to invest in same-solutions for the long-term benefit of better gas mileage while keeping it convenient. The coming advent of the PXV NEO will put us on the cutting edge of progressive wastewater treatment with novel solutions for the benefit of the community, both fiscally and environmentally. These are meaningful changes Phoenixville is making in a responsible manner. We all want to make decisions to keep our town thriving while doing our part to protect the planet. Subjecting the community to hopelessly inadequate straws and spoons for ice cream and water ice will have little effect on our stated environmental goals while actually punishing our residents. This may make everyone feel better about themselves and prove that we're trying, but at the end of the day, we'll be burdening Phoenixville with an ordinance that has no hope of actually impacting the climate or environment. Why should we force our residents and businesses to pay what is in effect a tax? The benefit isn't even vaguely commensurate with the sacrifice. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or communications from council or updates?
I just wanted to thank everybody in the community, lots of community members, lots of community organizations, all of our fire departments, police department. We're all out for National Night Out. It was a lovely event, and it was very well participated by many. So I wanted to thank all that made that happen. Town Watch and our police department are the ones that make that happen. And then Veg Fest was down in Reeves Park this weekend. I got to go down. It was a great event. So I wanted to thank all of the groups Delaware Valley Veg and Pan, who put that celebration together. And that's all I have this time. Seems short for me, but...
Thank you. Ms. Kirker?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I just have one reply to an item in public participation, and that is to Dr. Sannick, with whom I spoke this morning, but I did not have a chance to get back to him. And regarding that light in the alley, that is in the queue to be fixed, from what I understand. So I'm sorry I did not pass that on to you before the meeting. And I'd also like to add that I appreciate the people who came forward to talk about the plastics ordinance, the plastic bag ordinance, as well as potential issues with the Rec Center. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Any other beats from council? Seeing none, we'll move on with our agenda. We'll move to our mayor's report. Mayor Urschler.
Thank you so much, Mr. President. Good evening, everyone. Thank you all so much for being here with us today. I just want to start by saying certainly to all of you who are here in person and those who are joining us virtually, thank you for being here and thank you for being active participants in this community. We have an extraordinary place to live, but we certainly have a lot of work to do, as do most communities, as do all the communities. But certainly, it's work that we can do together and that we can always do it with kind and respectful dialogue. And that is what, to me, makes Phoenixville a very special place to be. So thank you for being here. Thank you for adding your voices to that dialogue and ensuring our community continues forward in the best way possible and that every voice is heard and every person has a seat in this room. And so just a reminder for those who aren't physically in the room, you have a seat virtually, but you always have a seat in this room with us, too. So thank you very much. Thank you to all of you. A couple of things, I just wanted, big things to point out from the last month. We want to acknowledge and congratulate the Colonial Theater for a very successful Blob Fest. That was in July. Also, we want to thank our fire department and our police department, who hosted our English-as-a-second-language elementary school students on two different days in July. And a big shout-out to Alianza's to Phoenixville, as well as a number of organizations who helped to support LaFeria, which is a celebration of cultures within the borough of Phoenixville, Maine, and Bridge Street Parking Lot. As Councilwoman Berkeley said, thank you so much to the National Night Out, to our chief, to all of our first responders, and to Town Watch for helping put that together. Anyone who would like an interesting opportunity to be involved in First Friday, but maybe you want a little quieter atmosphere, Holy Ghost Church, who has not only been providing extraordinary parking to many of our visitors, also has reopened their social center, and they are now doing a coffee shop atmosphere on First Fridays. And it's music, it's poetry. Really, you can go, and it's essentially an open mic, and they're actually partnering with Jared from Bluebird Distillery. And Jared is bringing in coffee from his coffee house in Ardmore, from Char and Stave. So if you want an opportunity to try out that incredible coffee, you can do so at Holy Ghost, and of course, an incredible place to park if you need a spot during one of the street closures. Veg Fest, extraordinary. If you haven't had an opportunity, and you're, even if you're not vegetarian or vegan, highly recommend it. Just an incredible opportunity to see all types of cuisine that exist. We have coming up our new teacher orientation at the school district, so we certainly want to welcome all of our new teachers who will be joining the school district this year. We will be having a bus tour with them in the coming weeks, and so we're excited to welcome them to our community. Next up, certainly, I hope everyone will have a very safe Labor Day. And also, coming up, we have the Blues Festival within the next month. So check that out online. I'm sure they have their Facebook page or their website, but that will be here within the community. So again, thank you all for being here. Thank you for making this an incredible place to be and an incredible place to live.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Every month, we call residents who are interested in taking part in any of our boards, committees, or commissions. We do have current vacancies on zoning hearing board, HARB, Civil Service Commission, Human Relations Commission, and our Tree Advisory Commission. So any residents, if you live in the borough and you're interested in volunteering for one of our boards or committees, please reach out to one of your council people, and we'll be happy to walk you through the process. And we are always looking for more volunteers. With that, we'll move on to new business. Item 9A has been struck from the agenda, but we do not have a motion for that tonight. So we'll move on to item 9B with a ZHB application. What is council's pleasure?
I'll make a motion to review the ZHB application from 29 Gay Street, requesting a variance to change non-conforming use of a building or structure from a office or medical usage to a residential duplex and determine whether to send the borough solicitor on August 16th, 2023, to the zoning hearing board meeting.
Second.
If I, if I might, we got a little...
Yep, I jumped the gun. Sorry. I can, do you want me to withdraw so that you can give the background? Okay, I'll withdraw.
But I'd like to just give you a background. This is a, this was a duplex. It was a residence back when, and it's like the other units that are around it. It was then converted into an office, a medical office building. It's been sold, and now the people want to put it back to where it was. And if it's within the location, staff's recommendation, and that would be our recommendation for a motion, would be no need to send the solicitor to this. Let the zoning hearing board take it as well, and I think that they'll do exactly what we think they will do. So I would, I would recommend a motion to not send a solicitor.
So do you want me to just amend my own motion? Is that, okay?
And that's acceptable with the second, or?
Acceptable.
All right, questions on the motion? We're good on the motion? All right. Any questions on this motion for ZHB? A duplex back to a duplex. Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Up next, we have Section 10 Resolutions and Ordinances. First up, we have a motion to adopt an ordinance amending Chapter 10 Health Safety by adding Part 5 Plastics. What is council's pleasure pertaining to this advertised ordinance amendment proposal?
Mr. President, I will make a motion to adopt the ordinance.
Second, motion by Ms. Kirker, second by Mr. Weiss. Questions on the motion?
Yeah, I think one reason for my motion was to bring it into discussion. I think some of the points that we've heard this evening are salient and cogent. Fancy way of saying good, I guess. But I, yeah, I looked through this, and I do see areas where I think the Policy Committee could do a little bit more work on it. For example, the whole language about pricing for bags, I mean, that's, that seems to me, it may be kind of moot because can a business do whatever it wants to with, you know, they can charge for bags. They want to, they don't have to charge for bags. I mean, they can charge for bags now. You know, a business could charge a buck fifty for a bag. And is, is an ordinance that says 10 cents enforceable? I don't, I'm not so sure that aspect of it is enforceable. Ms. Meadows raised a very good point about it's number four under definitions rec... It's number four under definitions recyclable paper bag displaying the word recyclable. I, I think this, I think this needs to go back to committee for some work and I ask when it does go back to committee. And that would be the policy committee which meets. Two weeks from tonight. Whatever date that is. Be the twenty-second, right? Tuesday, the twenty-second at seven o'clock. I, I would ask that you folks to please come to that meeting. And. Make the points you made and. Open up for this, open it for discussion. At that time where we can have a more, more granular discussion on it. So. Yeah, that's what I'm working up to. But I, I want to hold off to, to see if any others have. Come thoughts on it because motions at table, there's no discussion on it. So I'll hold off on that.
Thank you, Mr. Kirchner. I, I too think that some discussion should happen. I think we have had a lot of discussion, so I don't want to minimize the discussion we've had. But in, in talking with some of the business owners, I know Mr. Ewald spoke with a lot of the business owners. We've tried to, to adjust some things and make some minor tweaks. And in hearing some of the comments today and also talking to some business owners today, I was able to speak with a few and take some phone calls today. Prior to the meeting, I think that again, that communication and that discussion piece needs to happen a little bit more in depth. And I think that that would be a really great way to really get this solid and where we want it. And have, you know, every really, everyone really understand it. Some of the comments made today, I think are. From not understanding what's written and what, why it's been written that way. And some of it, maybe we can do a little better. Mr. Carmen, you know, I see you.
Yeah, no, I was going to agree that I think, you know, maybe we should, you know, given the points that are brought up tonight, maybe we should talk, toss this back to committee. And go through, one of the questions I have, which Rich brought up and public brought up tonight, it is a little confusing, the ten cents and who that is to benefit. And so it maybe that could be optional or something we could talk further about. So, but I agree. I think we need more. This needs a little more work.
As the policy committee brings this forward, in my opinion, and I, I asked in a kind of casual way, but I didn't really get it locked down. I'd like to know from the solicitor and borough management. What is the legal basis under Pennsylvania law? For us passing this law? I mean, what is the, what is the fundament? I mean, we can't, we can't, I, I guess there's something in the municipal code. That makes it possible for us to be able to say, these are the types of bags you can sell in the store. And because some people have brought up the question of, you know, what? What authority are we exercising here? And I, I've had that question since I understood we were proceeding this. I, and I do, I am aware. City of Philadelphia has banned these, has banned plastic bags. I mean, it is apparently legal. But I, it's, is it, is it sensible at the same time as it being legal?
Of course, I'm filling in for our normal solicitor, so I haven't been involved in all of the, the discussion to this point. But generally, it's a health, safety and public welfare issue that, that would fall under that umbrella. And there are, as you stated, other municipalities who, who are passing the same types of regulations. So in the same way that any other health, safety and welfare regulations would be passed governing businesses in the borough. That's the basis upon. Which this ordinance is being considered.
I can just piggyback on that. Borough code allows Borough Council to pass its own ordinances and legislate it within its municipal boundaries. But you can be sued for that. And so there's, there's where the, the state gets involved is if it goes up through the, the court system. We have neighbors in, in Westchester, we've talked about this many times where they've enacted an ordinance. And, and in fact, I think one of these, this is one of the ordinances that they originally enacted. So the risk is that you could be sued and you could be taken to court. But the Borough Code provides that a Borough Council can enact an ordinance that they believe is in the best interest of its. Citizens within the corporate boundary.
And as my colleague Dana pointed out, Ms. Dugan pointed out, you know. It, it piecemeal enactment may or may not be. Contributing to plastics reduction. I mean, I would like to understand a little bit more as, as we're implementing this policy. Other than we believe. Removing these plastic from this community will remove plastic, some small. You know, the ocean is made out of raindrops. You know, one, one more element of the contribution to. You know, reducing the creation of these bags. Yeah, you know. I, I'd like to, I'd like to know a little bit more about as policy looks into it. If there's any information as to, for instance, how successful Philadelphia has been. And if there's, if they've actually had an impact. You know, how would a borough of twenty thousand people? And, and however many plastic bags are utilized right now, how would that borough? How would that reduction bypassing this occur? What, what do we think would be the outcome?
So it was happy to send things back to policy for further discussion. It will be our seventh meeting discussing this. So I do welcome the public to come and attend. To, to voice comments on that. A couple of points from, from where. From our last meeting in May, we did have this item on the agenda. And I know some of the confusion was there was that advertisement we've, and then we updated it as the current form that was in the packet tonight. So we were trying to address the ten cent issue. That was adjusted from a shout to a may, trying to make that a voluntary action. And it's always good to spend a little bit more time cleaning that up and that's fine. To, to the neighboring questions, this past spring, East Town Township, True Different Township and Rander Township. While Township's not a borough, all adopted this, a very similar ordinance from which we hold much of the language. And in speaking with their management, their restaurants, their businesses have had near, near full compliance. And, and almost zero complaints on, on the process. So this is something that has been making its way through. Through local government, particularly in our region for Pennsylvania. So any other questions or comments on this in, in regard to any items addressed tonight?
If I may, Mr. Ewald, I know borough staff. Worked, put a lot of hours into this and looked at other ordinances to serve as a model. As did our, our solicitor as well. And to add to the list of neighboring communities. What, what sort of caught my attention was Media Borough adopted a plastics ordinance as war, as well. It's a borough, it's a borough with an acme in it or an acamey. It's three syllables.
It is dumbco.
Let me, let me get that correct. Where they, they probably sell bottled water. But, but because of that, I, you know, that's, that's sort of got me thinking that this, this is something worth looking at. I agree with Ms. Dugan that this is something that the state legislature should do, but they won't. And so we, we have to do it piecemeal, little bit here, a little bit there, do our part. But I, I do think it does need some work. So with that. Trusting there's no other discussion on it. I would like to make a motion to table this and send this back to policy committee.
Motion to table, second by Ms. Dugan. There's no comments on questioning or on tabling. All those in favor?
I.
Opposed. Motion carries seven zero. And that will be back at policy on the twenty-second, you said? Believe?
It is the twenty-second.
August twenty-second.
Seven P M. In this room.
It's on the back of the agenda to everybody if you need that visual.
All right, moving on to item B, we have a motion to consider a modification to our motor vehicles, chapter fifteen.
I'll make a motion to adopt the ordinance amending chapter fifteen motor vehicles.
Second, motion by Ms. Berkeley, second by Mr. Weiss. Questions on the motion and some background?
I, I do have one question. I thought these kind of things we didn't have to do. By this ordinance updating process. I thought we, I thought there was a way to change that. No? Like stop signs and things like that.
What, before we used to hold a public hearing. We're not required to do the public hearing, which was more exhaustive. And so we, now we are able to do, it's a streamlined way of getting through this. To answer, if I can just continue to ask your question, what this does is it. Section fifteen twenty-four, we do, removes two loading and unloading zones on Church Street. Because they're, they're no longer being utilized there by freeing up additional parking in that location. And based on the fact that we learned a little bit more as it relates to Heckle Street. We are going to be fixing the road in a way that we will allow. This will allow parking on the, the west side of Heckle Street, which I think will serve the neighborhood that was concerned about that. And then on Franklin Street. Because of the, the amount of activity that we are now seeing with our disc golf, our enhanced community gardens. The park, the mountain bike park, the dog park. People are starting to park wherever they can until we can get the increased parking lot done, which will start in September. We realized that that section of Franklin Street between Fillmore Street and the top of the park. People were starting to park there and there's just no way that we can allow that. So to improve the public safety by having emergency vehicles, be able to get in and out of there. Our recommendation is that on both sides of Phil, Franklin, between Fillmore and there be no parking. And till we can get some additional parking, we have to do that.
And so where is the actual, where in the park, where along the reservoir does that stop? Does that bend or?
It's, it's, as you go up Franklin from Fillmore and, and as soon as you turn right, then that stops.
Okay, so, so there will be, where we're putting in new parking is not going to be.
Correct.
Okay, very good. I can understand that and that will allow better movement for our trucks.
Mr. President, if I may just add for the edification of the public Franklin Street. I'm, we know it's called Franklin Avenue, but in the ordinance, it's called Franklin Street. So, so bear with us on that. The borough manager knows what he's talking about when he says Franklin Street.
Any other questions or comments on this, this motion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Hi.
Opposed. Motion carries seven zero. And lastly, we have a consideration about our two thousand and one Pierce contender pumper fire truck. What is council's pleasure?
Mr. President, I'll make a motion to adopt a resolution authorizing the sale of the two thousand and one Pierce contender pumper.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Weiss, second by Ms. Berkeley. This item is the next item up in our rotation to be replaced. And will be fully replaced by our new tractor drawn aerial. And this is just authorizing the method of sale to another fire or emergency service agency. Similar as we did two years ago with our even older ninety-eight. So. Any questions on this motion or this process? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed. Motion carries seven zero. We don't have any public hearings tonight, which takes us to reports of committees, boards and commissions, planning commissioner, Mr. Moore.
Thank you, Mr. President. No projects to report for the Borough Council now. There were two projects discussed, but they're not currently ready to come before the council. We did have a, our meeting was later in the month than normal for July. And the next meeting of the planning commission will be this Thursday, the August tenth at six, six P M. Here in Chambers.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Ms. Dugan with Harb.
There's no action report.
Mr. Kirchner with PRC.
There was no meeting last month.
Very good.
Nothing to report.
Ms. Dugan with Rec Board.
Okay, I'm gonna get to some of our fun programs. We have a whole booklet full of these things, but I'm just gonna highlight some of the ones that are either new or just starting. For the season. The basketball summer camp is from August twenty-first to the twenty-fifth. For ages six to thirteen, that's at the rec center. The T-Bird T-Ball. That's at the Pat Naddle Friendship or Friendship Field, September ninth to October fourteenth. And that's for three to five-year-olds. Science Explorers. That's at the Recreation Center, August fourteenth to the eighteenth for ages four to six. The Phoenixville Recreation Youth Basketball League Fall twenty twenty-three. That's Wednesdays from September sixth to October twenty-fifth for grades three to twelve. The skate camp, this is at the Morris Street Park. From October or on October twentieth, that's a Friday from one to three P M. The Badminton Clinic is in the Phoenixville Rec Center Saturdays, August and September. And the, the Learn to Skateboard is a new thing that is at Morris Park. On Tuesdays from October third to October twenty-fourth, and that's for six to nine-year-olds. So much fun is starting up again. That's a great program. And that runs from September ninth to October fourteenth with youth and adults programs available. NFL Coed Flag Football is at, in, it's in King of Prussia, which is about a twenty-minute drive from the rec center. And that's going from August twenty-seventh to October twenty-ninth. We always have monthly yoga workshops and specialty classes. There's an August thirteenth, September tenth and October eighth one. And they are for things like wellness is the first one. The second one is flower essences and key gong and medicinal breath is the third one. The Coed Indoor Volleyball, that's open play Saturdays in August from twelve thirty to four thirty. Shuffleboard at the Phoenixville Rec Center, Thursday, August twenty-seventh to August twenty-fourth. And we've got the fall cooking workshops at the rec center, September second, October seventh and November, November fourth. On Saturdays from one to three, or you can do the evening ones, September thirteenth and twenty-seventh, October twenty-first and twenty-fifth. November eighth and twenty-second, and that's on Wednesdays from six to eight. And finally, the key gong at the rec center, that's Fridays, August eleventh to September fifteenth. From at ten to eleven. And that's all.
Hey, Ms. Dugan. With that, Ms. Berkeley with CAC.
I don't have mentioned a report, but I did really want to commend staff. One of our newer staff members, although she's been with us for a while now, I think COVID time made it seem shorter than it really is. But Alexis Strunk, she's done a phenomenal job, really working to make sure things are inventoried. And, you know, we're working with the arborsian, taking his reports and sharing that with the public. And working on making sure we're really looking at when we're purchasing new trees, we're really looking at pricing. So she's done a phenomenal job. The committee really was impressed with what she's been doing and it's made them be more efficient. So I just really wanted to comment on that.
Okay, we'll be on to section thirteen, council action referred from various committees. Back to Ms. Berkeley with Personnel, Public Safety Committee.
We have a lot here on this agenda because we just met yesterday. So I'd like to make a motion to reappoint Joel Bartlett. To the Historical and Architectural, last night I said Agriculture, I don't know why, Review Board. For a new term expiring August thirty-first, twenty twenty-seven.
Motion by Ms. Berkeley, second by Ms. Dugan. Questions on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Hi.
Opposed. Motion carries seven zero.
My next motion would be to accept the resignation of Ethan Polycastro from the Civil Service Commission.
Second.
Mr. Polycastro.
Yep, motion by Ms. Berkeley, second by Mr. Weiss. I thought that was a motion of not a second. Sorry. Questions on the motion?
He just moved out of the, the borough, so we thank him for his service. We'll talk about that in a minute.
With that, all those in favor?
Hi.
Opposed. Motion carries seven zero.
My next motion is to appoint Mary Weinberg to the Civil Service Commission to fill an unexpired term. Of January thirty-first, twenty twenty-eight.
Second.
All right, motion by Ms. Berkeley, second by Mr. Weiss. Questions on this motion?
No, I'll just comment that I know that staff, as well as the chief have said that she's been a wonderful part of the commission. She was a alternate, so now we're just moving her onto the commission fully.
We appreciate her continued interest in the, in the board. Any other questions on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed. Motion carries seven zero. Ms. Berkeley.
My next motion will to be, would be to adopt a resolution acknowledging Ethan Polycastro for his service on the Civil Service Commission.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Berkeley, second by Mr. Moore. Questions on this motion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Hi.
Opposed. Motion carries seven zero. The council gives me a moment. I will just take a moment to read into the record our official recognition for Ethan's contribution to. The Civil Service Commission. So with that, a resolution of gratitude for the public service of Ethan Polycastro as a member and chairperson of the Civil Service Commission. The Borough of Phoenixville, Chester County, Pennsylvania. Whereas Ethan Polycastro served diligently and honorably as a member and chairperson of the Civil Service Commission. From July fourteenth, twenty twenty through July nineteenth, twenty twenty three. And whereas Mister Polycastro. Provided invaluable and dedicated service to the Phoenixville Service, uh, Phoenixville Civil Service Commission and several Borough councils during that time. And whereas Borough Council wishes to express its most sincere gratitude and appreciation to Ethan Polycastro. For all of his efforts and commitment to the borough in performing his dedicated responsibilities over the past three years. Now therefore be it resolved by the Borough Council, the Borough of Phoenixville that in. Ethan Polycastro is recognized and publicly acknowledged for his commitment and efforts in performing his duties. And further does offer their best wishes in his future endeavors. Thank you, Ethan.
Thank you, Mister Ewald. My next motion will be to adopt a resolution acknowledging Travis Shaw for his service on the Tree Advisory Commission.
Motion by Miss Berkeley, second by Miss Dugan, questions on this motion? Seeing none, all those in favor. Opposed, motion carries seven zero. I will also read this one into our record. For. Travis Shaw. With that, a resolution of gratitude for the public service of Travis Shaw as a member of the Tree Advisory Commission. For the Borough of Phoenixville, Chester County, Pennsylvania. Whereas Travis Shaw served diligently and honorably as a member of the Phoenixville Tree Advisory Commission. From August eleventh, twenty twenty to June thirtieth, twenty twenty three. And whereas Mister Shaw provided an invaluable service to the Phoenixville Tree Advisory Commission during that time. And whereas Borough Council wishes to express its thanks and full appreciation. To Mister Shaw for all of his efforts and commitment to the Tree Advisory Commission while performing his duties. Now therefore be it resolved by the Borough Council, the Borough of Phoenixville, that Travis Shaw is recognized and publicly acknowledged. For his commitment and efforts in performing his duties and further does offer their best wishes in his future endeavors. Thank you.
Thank you, Mister Ewald. Um, and before I make the next motion, just, I know you already said this, but just to reiterate, we do have vacancies currently on zoning hearing board. Harb, um, Civil Service Commission, Human Relations Commission and Tree Advisory Commission. So. If someone is interested, please see, speak to one of our council members, speak to me, come to um, our next. Um, please personnel and public safety, and we'll be glad to talk about it with you. And then with that, we do have two more motions on um, the agenda. One, I will make a motion to approve the proposal from G V F T M A. Regarding a temporary mid-block crosswalk at the hundred block of Bridge Street. Mister Crick, do you want me to, oh, sorry, I need a second.
Second.
I'm just rolling through the agenda today.
Motion by Miss Berkeley, second by Mister Weiss, uh, Mister Crack, if you want to give us a little bit of background on this item.
Sure, we have.
I was gonna try, but.
We have a long talked about uh, the mid, the one hundred block. Yeah, everybody knows we have a mid-block crossing the two hundred block, which is actually shorter, uh, but nothing in the one hundred block. And we've, we've actually looked at the area, um, if you know where the Great American Pub is at and where the entrance to Phoenix Village is at. That's sort of the right location to do that. Uh, but we just really didn't have any real opportunity to put it before you. Uh, as it happens, Delaware Valley Regional Planning Commission, uh, put together a. Uh, Safe Streets, uh, uh, Grant and Greater Valley Forge T Transportation Management Association, which is what that acronym stands for. Uh, received an award to look at several municipalities, one being Phoenixville. And we looked at a couple of areas, uh, we looked at. Uh, a possible uh, mid-block crossing uh, on Franklin, uh, between Franklin Commons and the New Recreation Center. Uh, uh, street being a little bit narrow to really do that right. We looked at the location of the crossing on North Main Street where the Schuylkill River Trail crosses. Uh, some logistics there with the bridge and the in, uh, the. Possible intersection that may come about with steel point on one side. Riverworks on the other, and then the combination of the foundry and the uh, the entrance, uh, the one entrance to the Phoenix Village. That seemed to be problematic. So the third location we looked at happened to be the one hundred block and. What they, what they will do is, uh, we will, we would provide, uh, the the manpower, uh, painting crosswalk. Uh, with the, uh, what we call the piano keys, uh, paint a crosswalk. Uh, there's a uh, a four foot wide portable ramp, uh, that is approved and we can put on both sides. Uh, that would also allow water to channel on the uh, on the curb line. Uh, and then we'd have to put in uh, advanced signs saying that there is a crosswalk here for coming. Uh, and then. The big one, we would have to put delineators on the. South side at where the Great American Pub is at. In front of the location and eleven eight one parking stall there, but on the other side. Uh, we would have to put delineators on uh, front and back, so we'd eliminate two, so we'd be eliminating. On a temporary basis until we see if this really works and this is something council wants permanently, we would be eliminating three parking spots. We would do this. Uh, after the uh, the the Phoenix Inside Out uh, is over in October, we would. Install it while we still have the block uh, uh, shut down. That weekend before and then uh, set this all in motion. And then uh, G V F T M A comes in and will do all of the empirical study. Uh, counts and that, uh, we've talked with the mayor and the police chief. Uh, we might be able to put what they have a portable camera, we might be able to install that to help us. Uh, uh, understand how many people are actually using the crosswalks during that uh, that timeframe, so. Uh, it is at this point in time, your motion is it to allow us to do this temporarily. See how it works, how it functions and whether or not. Uh, at the end of the day, uh, we want a uh, a full-time mid-block crossing into one hundred block.
And should the study support a mid-block crossing, we could still determine the final location different from its temporary one?
That's correct, uh, although it. If you go too far to the west or too far to the east, you start to interfere with either ends of the intersection, so we have to be mindful of that. And the study will ferret that out.
Yeah. Any other questions on this motion?
That, uh, how many parking spots, at least for this test, would we be losing?
Three total, three. On a temporary basis.
But that could be, if we, if this spot works, we could be losing three parking spots permanently.
Good.
Potentially, but again, it's temporary. We talked about really looking at utilization. Um, because again, public safety and not having a pedestrian struck could be worth three parking spots, um, but those data will be telling.
Any other questions on this item? I've seen none, all those in favor. Opposed. Motion carries six one. And with that, we have uh, one more motion on P yourself, right?
Yep, that, back to me again. Um, so I'll make a motion to adopt a resolution updating the Borough of Phoenixville Emergency Operations Plan.
Second.
And this is really just a general update, not a lot of content changes, just making sure everything's up to date formatting and that and such.
Just annual update or biannual?
We, we will, uh, uh. Moving forward, we'll do an annual review and that, uh, there's some signatory uh, lines on there for any review. Uh, after two, three or four years, whatever uh, was is appropriate, because people change at the county, people change here. Uh, staffs change, all of those things can happen, new equipment and all of that, so we would. We would only go three to four years out before we'd actually updated in full again.
Sounds good. All those in favor?
Hi.
Opposed. Motion carries seven zero. If you've not, uh, after the meeting, make sure you. Sign off on that. With that, we'll move to uh, committee updates from Parks and Rec, Mister Moore.
Uh, thank you, Mister President. Uh, before I go on to uh, the item, the one item from our last meeting, I'd just like to. Having just listening to Ms. Dugan list everything from the record and everything we do, I just thought I'd pay tribute to the. To the Recreation Department. We, we're like. We're like late years ahead of everybody and and the the energy that you encounter and the activity that we are doing, just this. This one little borough is just. Is amazing to me and I just, I, and we have such a great staff that make it happen. I just really wanna. Express my appreciation for them and all, everything they do. Um, tonight I'd like to make a motion to authorize Borough Manager and the Solicitor to take the necessary actions to transfer the properties and vacate the paper streets. In the most economical manner for the M D M Preserve and to place a restriction on the property to remain as permanent open space, which is recommended. Recommended in Committee three nothing.
Questions on this item? I know I have a few, um, I was not able to attend the the rec discussion, um, and I've mentioned these in the past. In terms of. Permanent open spaces, is that a deed restriction that we place or? Not familiar with, we've never had to do that, or I guess for other parks we have. Is that a park?
We, we do have a couple of deed restrictions, uh, uh, Mister Kirk probably knows more about them than than anybody. Uh, the Fisher Park. Uh, and the Andre Thornton Park have deed restrictions because we acquired funding from D C and R. Uh, way, way back. Uh, and then, uh, most recently, the deed restrictions that we have is, uh, what is now called Pat and Attle Field. Uh, we've received funding from D C and R. There are restrictions there, uh, as to, uh. Uh, what we can do with the property, so it's, this is not uncommon. The, uh, in this case, it would be, uh, we would go through the process. Uh, getting the appropriate deeds, uh, uh, transferred to the borough. From the current property owners and then the vacating of the street. Do what is called a deed of consolidation. And then at that point in time, put the deed restriction in place, once we've acquired the property and consolidated in into one. We wouldn't do the deed restrictions right out of the box because we want to get all of the, uh, uh, eyes. Uh, dotted and teased for us before we went down that road, but this would set all of these things in motion. And I, I do want to make sure that everybody recognizes this is. I've, uh, Woodley knows I've used the term, uh, uh, we, we, we run at glacial speed, uh, uh. When you're dealing with property and you're dealing with deeds, it moves slowly, so while you're authorizing this. You would be authorizing us tonight, we still have a lot of things that we have to do, but it's the, it's the first step. You still have to ultimately approve. The transfer to properties, when we get to that point, we find iron out all those details. And you would still have to prove by ordinance the transfer of the. Uh, the transfer of the property, uh, as it relates to vacating the streets, so it's a lot more things to do. Hopefully. By the end of the year or the very early part of twenty twenty four, if I'm being real realistic about. What I know about how long it takes to get these things done.
And I'd just like to express my support for this and my appreciation to both Marion and Dave Moskowitz. As well as the support from the uh, Fillmore Village Board of Directors. In terms of their support for also carrying this out as the neighbors and, um. Ultimately, the vision would be, once all of this paperwork and the the preserve is established. Then we would be proceeding, I guess it with. Looking for grants and so forth to do some. You know, some create some very simple, it's gonna be a nature preserve, but we can create some access points and so forth, so that it can be. Accessed and, uh, but still be preserved as as pure open space.
As, as I understand it, the intent, uh, and there is, uh, uh, Woodley has, uh. Uh, uh, taken the lion's share of effort to to seek out people who do these kinds of designs in. Uh, uh, open space, uh, arenas. The, uh, to. Make sure that everybody recognizes, this would, we would not be paving this, uh, between, uh, Taylor and down to the Schuylkill River Trail. Uh, this would really truly be more of a nature trail. It would be path like. Uh, maybe on the high end side, it would be, uh, some sort of mulch, but generally speaking, it would be. Uh, uh, natural trail type of an environment. Uh, not an expressway between one part of the, uh, to borough to the to the Schuylkill River Trail.
Mister Kirk. Thank you, Mister President. Would this, uh, a question for the Borough Manager? Would this consolidate the Taylor Street Park parcel? Into. All these other parcels that are part of this?
I've looked at that a lot and I've, I've tried to anticipate what would be in the best interest of the borough and I, and, uh, Miss Kirk, I think the. The best thing for the borough would be to keep the park portion, uh, with the vacated pieces. With Taylor Street Park to give us more flexibility with the park and then leave the second as its own parcel so that. Uh, as open space, we would not encumber our own, uh, uh, Taylor Street Park inadvertently. So that would be my recommendation.
I like that answer, thank you.
This is, uh, as it stands currently undevelopable wetlands?
Uh, I would say that it's not wetlands. I would say that it's undevelopable. There might be land that's wet, but it's not wetlands.
One of the documents in the supporting information claimed to wetlands, so I wasn't sure about that anymore. And other questions on the motion? I've, I mean, I still have concerns about the underlying condition of this property and I, I, I do feel like this is something the current, current property owners could. Uh, further vet for us, but I assume the borough will be responsible for these reverse subdivision and all. Legal aspects to.
Well, we, we, uh. The. The, in the approval of the Odessa property, while we did do a phase one environmental, uh, on the approval of the Odessa. Uh, Mister Moskowitz agreed to pay us, uh, reimburse us for that, so we'll get reimbursed for the phase one environmental that was done. Uh, as it relates to. I have not had any dialogue, certainly I can ask the question if there is a willingness to support, uh, the, uh, the legal. Uh, transactions, uh, financially, so I'll ask that question on behalf of council.
Any other questions on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor.
Hi.
Opposed. Motion carries six one. Move on to, uh, Mister Kirk with policy, yeah.
Yeah, no action to report, Mister President, but I, again, I will remind that the next meeting is Tuesday, April twenty second. Seven P M. Here, thank you.
August?
August, yes. Thank you.
With that, we'll move to Mister Weiss with I T T.
Uh, hi, thank you, Mister President. No action to report here. Our next meeting is, um, one week from tonight on, uh, August fifteenth at seven P M. Thank you.
Similar to your committee, do we have an update on when we get new microphones? Thank you.
Yeah, good. For everybody, that was before the next council meeting so that we can, uh, help our audience.
These are getting hard to use.
Yes, they are.
Lot of miles. Uh, Finance Committee, Miss Dugan.
Everything was covered in the consent agenda.
Thank you. Move on to the second and final round of public participation. If you did not join us at the beginning of tonight's meeting. We do ask that members of the public who are joining us in the room, please step up to the podium, sign in with your name and address and. Uh, if you can let council know your name and. Whether you're a resident for the purpose of the minutes, we will start with, uh, members of the public who are joining us here in the room. After we've worked through that queue, we will then move to members who are joining us remotely via the Zoom platform. If you are joining us via Zoom, if you would, uh, please raise your hand digitally now so that we can work our way through both lines. Mister Spencer Rocker.
Yeah, my name is Dennis Spencer Mucker. I lived in the borough. For thirty seven years. And I'm here on the. The issue that we've been dealing with on East Grand Street for. I guess ever. I don't want to sound sarcastic, but, uh, I do have a statement I'd like to read. I can't. Address some things. Because I've, over the last year, I've called the police quite often and they've advised me to continue to call. When I have to. And I came tonight to see this thing through, uh, to a satisfactory ending. I am referring to the spiteful parking on East Grant Street. And I mean spiteful because. You come there, you can see it for yourself, you'll see the spitefulness. There's a two and a half ton truck. Packed on the lawn and a brown truck. Not worthy of being on the road in this man's driveway. For now, Mister Wagner has stopped doing burnouts in front of my house, stopped shining. A deer spotting light in my front, uh. Living room window. While I watch TV and he has stopped making weird noises and laughing and my only. Suspicion is that somebody from the police department has finally, uh. Gotten through to him. But I came tonight because I'm not so sure about that. I can't say for certain that occurred. It looks like there has been a change in his behavior. Um, but that can change in a second. So for now, I'm gonna take the high road and, uh. Follow what I've been instructed to do by the police, which is to call. And, uh, to not engage. I have been instructed not to engage in any. Verbal. verbal activity with the man at all. And as the person said tonight, he feels that everyone that lives in Phoenixville should be treated equally and treated fairly. And I agree with him. And when I look out my front window and I see cars deliberately parked so that people can't find a parking spot, I honestly say to myself, why am I bothered with this? I have my own driveway. I put the money out years ago. But I am involved with it and I do care about it because we're all together in this. And if we're not, maybe, maybe you should consider leaving town. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Molly Coats. I live at eight oh one Furnace Court. I firstly wanted to thank the council on behalf of the Phoenixville Green Team and the RE 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 Plastics Committee for the opportunity to make our town a more hospital place for environmental betterment and environmental sustainability. I'm so sorry, I'm very nervous. By reviewing the ordinance, though there's still obviously a lot of work to be done as far as revision of the ordinance, I think this is a really great advancement for our town. I just wanted to address some concerns, I think, brought up by some council members regarding our impact as a town overall. I personally believe that a small impact can make a really monumental change. And if one person doesn't stand up for what they believe in, then I don't think anybody will have the courage to come forward and stand up for what they believe in, including environmental impact as stated before. Yeah. I think if we don't see more small towns like ours taking action through ordinances such as the one reviewed tonight, then our state government is not going to take action either if we don't really address these issues by banning plastics on a smaller level, then we're not going to see big changes and lasting changes, not only in our just our state, but also on a national and global level. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, guys. Carol Boucher. I live in Phoenix Village. I just had a couple of thoughts. Thank you, everyone. This has been great, good, great information. I just had a few thoughts about the crosswalk situation. I just would like to encourage whoever's going to be working on that to just spend a little time observing the actual patterns of movement with both the cars and the people everywhere from Iron Hill where we have an existing crosswalk to the middle of the block. I live there and I do often cross right across the middle. And I think that the problem is, is because the original, the, the crosswalk that exists on that corner, it's not functioning fully as I think it can. I don't know what the traffic parameters are, but perhaps a flashing light might be good. A speed hump there. Also, perhaps the little yellow plastic thing that goes in the middle when there's a crosswalk will get the traffic to slow down. I think once they're waiting, depending on the patterns, when they're waiting at the light at twenty-nine, once they get the go-ahead, they sort of, they want to get going. And now from there, oftentimes, we residents are coming out there to turn left. A lot of times, we're trying to go you know, to four twenty-two. Because if we want to go right, we'll leave out the Main Street exit and we go that way. So every time we pull out there, we're trying to go left. Which makes it difficult because people are trying to cross there. We want to turn left, the cars don't want to stop. I guess I'm just trying to illustrate that it's a little complicated and if we can get that crosswalk perhaps to function a little better, we might not need a second one. I think I was understanding that we were proposing a second one in the middle of the block. Having two, I think if people maybe observe, it may be problematic and in that once they get, the cars get past one, they're going to want to speed up again, like I'm just not sure how the actual public is, in driving is going to like how it would actually function. And I would like to recommend that the, the last parking spot, I, I believe the restaurant is Paloma, I changed a few times, so in the brown building there. That last one could be helpful to get rid of because you, when you pull out, you really can't see. And if we can get rid of that one spot, it might just facilitate better than getting rid of three spots and I think Bridge really needs all the parking it can get. I want to say something about I, I support fully the rainbow that's on our crosswalk. I'm wondering if maybe just the center part is more like super obvious that this is a crosswalk. Because I think sometimes it could be maybe look more like art and perhaps if we leave it a rainbow, we could add the actual thing that's like crosswalk, you know, like make it more obvious because a lot of the people cutting through are visitors and they don't, maybe they don't like get it. They're trying to get, they're trying to go across town. And if we were to remove any part of that, maybe we could put flags, have other ways of celebrating diversity. And just make sure that thing is utilitarian for what we need so that we can just try and we could certainly keep the other sides. But maybe that one that goes across the middle might have to be just sort of like screaming that, slow down. This is a crosswalk, okay? So those are just ideas. I'm sure you'll figure it all out. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. If any members are looking to make comments tonight online, please raise your hand digitally as we still work through some members here in the room. Dr. Santa?
Yeah, I just didn't sign in and I want to thank Councilman Kurtner. I try to get there earlier and ask you whether it's heard anything, but as usual, got out late and hope to find out about whether there was rezoning meetings and, thank you.
Thank you. Any members wishing to make comment who are joining us on the Zoom platform? Okay, seeing none. We'll close the second and final round of public participation and move on to our second round of communication council participation. Any other comments, questions, or considerations from council tonight? Okay, seeing none. In your packets, your staff reports were made available for all of our department heads. Item seventeen here, council did meet an executive session on July thirteenth, twenty twenty-three to discuss personnel, real estate, and litigation. And tonight, we do have the requirement for executive session to discuss personnel, real estate, and litigation. What is council's pleasure?
Mr. President, I'll make a motion to adjourn to executive session.
Second.
Questions on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Hi.
Opposed, motion carries seven zero. Our next Borough Council meeting will be in this room, September twelfth. Have a great night. Thank you.